Any like a pop order? Anybody stand for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have roll call please?
Bader.
President.
Hicks.
President.
Frye.
President.
Alamon.
Here.
Louder.
Here.
Farmer.
President.
Householder.
Here, President.
Uh, next one is approval of the agenda for December 4th, 2017.
Think we're gonna have to add under, uh, number 12 board commission appointments and correspondence in H because we did get an interest in a DDA seat from Dave McHardy.
From Dave McHardy.
DDA seat, H.
Or, oh, we add that to, uh, 12, please.
We could, we could put it here.
Add it to, uh, another...
Yes, actually, we're gonna add it to B because we've got one.
12B.
So, we'll add up that H.
American member. So, can we get...
Make the motion to accept the agenda with the addition to the DDA seat in 12B.
I support.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Next one is the, uh, approval of city council minutes and regular meeting on 12/4, 2017.
I make the motion that we accept the regular, um, meeting minutes of Monday, December 4th, 2017 from the City of Bangor.
I support.
Any discussion?
I would like to just say that as far as the sign, Jim McLean, the word recipient was spelled recipient, and I did contact him about it and they kind of fixed that.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Uh, the next one is approval, council payable and payroll.
Okay, the first one you have is the TNA account, number two. Got the ABB joint fire board for $66.38, 60, uh, city of Bangor for $981.64. Fifth third bank is a summer tax refund for $1,013.13. Van Buren County Treasurer for $617.11. Totaling $2,678.26. I make a motion that we approve that.
I support.
Any more discussion? Roll call please.
Bader.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Frye.
Yes.
Alamon.
Yes.
Louder.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Householder.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next one comes out of Rhodes. Chrome excavating for $10,000, Landis Hardwood for $22.98. Smith Tree Service for $900, Lightman Associates, Associates for $132.28. Totals for $11,055.26, I make a motion that we pay them.
And that chrome excavating, is that for the part of my...
Is there a second on the table?
I support.
Thank you.
No, that's for the dip. The dip. That's part of the road expense.
Okay.
You just have to come up with the sewer part.
Okay.
So, chrome's part of the road. Which tree were it, were Smith Tree Services?
That was actually on Hamilton, and that is not our tree, but we're going to have to get Sterling involved in writing a letter to the owner of the tree.
All right. So, there's motion table been seconded. Roll call please.
Bader.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Frye.
Yes.
Alamon.
Yes.
Louder.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Householder.
Yes, motion approved.
Next one?
Next one comes out of our general checking, too. There's 26 items, totally $101,073.39. We also have payroll in there of $19,301.7 cents. Council pay of $3,121.85. Debit card transactions for November of $1,489.41. For a grand total of $124,985.72. And I make a motion that we pay that.
I support.
Any discussion?
I have a question, LA number two, I'm assuming that's a, that's a payment on that one?
Yes, $2,072.
That's number two on Jimmy's. Okay. So, we have one more, right?
Actually, I get nervous when we have six figures to pay out in one month, but LMR is, uh, the biggest part of this whole number. And it looks like we have about $300,000 left in that grant money. I'd, I'd kind of like to get an update on percentage of completion.
Any more discussion? Roll call please.
Bader.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Frye.
Yes.
Alamon.
Yes.
Louder.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Householder.
Yes, motion approved.
Uh, going down the list, next one's other regular business, uh, resolutions, proclamation, reports, and presentation. Any questions on Department of Public Works report?
I was happy to see that we did get an extension on our warranty for our LEAP Act. It's like, mm.
With that LEAP back, just a quick question, so, because it kept breaking down all the time. I mean, is an extended warranty gonna be enough for that? So, we get it back in the spring and it starts breaking down like that, I mean, are we gonna keep that?
The warranty goes through next December.
For another year.
So, it'll get us through another LEAP season.
Yeah, but we paid a lot of money for this thing. I don't want to get through two seasons and then that thing trash out on us and it's no good, a piece of junk.
Well, hopefully it won't. The issue with the, the last issue we had was, um, the manufacturer was contacted and there had been problems with that, so they were sending a fooling unit.
They're gonna do some updates on that, you know, at no cost to us, uh, such as putting a cooler on for the hydraulic oil, which was the last issue we had. Other than that, uh, I'd, I'd say we have this kind of problem next fall, and we're gonna have to start talking about the one.
Yeah.
Well, remember, too, if not talking about another year, we, we're gonna be paying it for about 10 years.
Right, that's what I'm saying. I don't know.
That's what we're saying, that's what we're saying.
Yeah, it's a pretty hefty amount, I think.
It's a lot of problems, right?
Okay, on the master meters that have been installed, we're about a fourth of the way through. How many we have for the whole city?
Uh, I think a little over 20%, so we're getting close to a quarter. Two and a half.
Any other more questions on Department of Public Works? Now, let's keep on moving down, next one's the, uh, Bangor Police Department Report.
I, I have a question on that, Tommy, if, because you've got down here drug offenses four. If we do, do we ever do seizure of property?
They're law, we have not done anything because of the laws are really restricted on that. We have to absolutely prove that the stuff they were using, or the stuff they had, like money, homes, you can actually link that up to...
Up to the drugs?
Right. And if I do get evidence of that, I would seize that.
Okay, okay.
Hey, Tom.
I'm sorry.
No, I just, I just wondered because...
Just had a quick question here. Um, I saw the light 13 on there, which is quite a bit. That's good. Um, I was showing a place over on Morrison Street. Did we take care of that one, or did that one get cited or anything?
That's the...
That's the one I think you're gonna write a ticket on because he cleaned up the front area, but he cleaned up the back.
I thought you were a big improvement. I'm not happy with the back, so actually enforcement actually gonna be taking on that one.
Okay, but they are working on it, because that looked dangerous.
Um, actually, they're, they didn't work on it until like, the front part was good, but the back's not good, and I don't want to have an issue with it, so we're just, we're gonna make the judge order.
Okay.
We'll be citing it this week. We tried to get it today, but couldn't.
Yeah, because that looked dangerous, man.
Right, any other questions? Any other questions, comments on the Bangor Police Department Report?
Nope.
I moved down the list, next one is fire department report. Any questions or comments on that?
Now, the fire department had their Christmas party, and it was just a super nice party. Had a really good speaker that, uh, told us how he runs his department and probably give us some hints on how to...
Oh, it was nice of them, but one, uh, best use of lights.
That was very nice, yeah.
And they donated $200 to the van boosters.
And I think it's nice that they're gonna be adopting four to five families for Christmas, too, interfering with daycare, which is nice.
Any more questions, comments on that? All right, moving down the list, next one's the DDA report.
Yeah, um, pretty short meeting we had for the DDA. Um, we met, uh, got quite a bit accomplished, though. Uh, we did get a, um, from the McKenna and Associates for our DDA plan. Uh, they did give us a electronic copy of a new survey that they're gonna come out, community assessment, um, a survey about what people think about our community and why they want to stop, why, how many times they go through, just different things trying to pinpoint what we can do to try to capture some of the business that comes through here, um, every day. So, uh, we're going to vote on that and make changes to it, and that's gonna go out to the community, um, at some point, and then they can answer those questions, and when we can get that back and compile it, then we'll set up, um, uh, a meeting with that, a community meeting. Um, we did, uh, grant permission for, uh, our lawyer Sterling to, um, continue negotiations with the Hydra Group LLC that is interested in buying our DDA building at 135 West Monroe Street. Um, so those talks are ongoing, I'm assuming, right now.
Mm-hmm.
Good job. Um, and, um, let's see. Rebecca has got, uh, we're waiting to hear back from, um, I'm not sure who she had to contact for this, uh, about the, we need to do a phase one on the carriage house antique mall behind the, the carriage house behind the antique mall and Jerry's Garage. So, we're waiting to hear back the cost of that and what it's gonna tell, what we need to do as far as that goes. Um, we do have our new light pole is on order and is, uh, scheduled to be shipped on December 22nd. Um, that's a light pole that's gonna go between, uh, parking lots and Monroe Street out here, um, by the old Massey's Building. Um, we, uh, do have a contact out to Jamie Moreno, waiting to hear back from them about our trees out here on the main strip, some of the ones that are getting pretty tall, what we can do about that. Uh, sadly, um, and regrettably, we did have to, uh, we did, uh, move to accept the resignation of, uh, three DDA members, two of them being longtime members, um, Bob Emmert, Pat Bader, and Rich Green. But on a bright note, we did, uh, make a motion to, uh, recommend, uh, new DDA member, Bill Stanislavsky, to the DDA as an at-large member, so, and hopefully that'll be good for him, too. So... Um, and that's about it, unless you have anything to add, Nick?
Um, I'm just a little concerned about us potentially doing a phase one in property we don't own. As a DDA. Could be the lead in the back of the, uh, back here.
Right.
That should be the current owner. So, any other questions on the DDA report? Moving down the list, is next is Parks and Recreation Report.
I don't think we...
Uh, we're gonna resume meetings February the 12th.
Okay.
Um, we're, I guess we're probably gonna end up needing two members there now. I guess Rich is gonna be ended up resigning from that also. So, our boards need help.
Okay. Um, if you guys can meet, please, and get together and let us know what's going on, then we can look and appoint new members. Thank you. Um, next one is gonna be the managers' report, which everybody has a copy of it. Anything you want to say, Regina?
If you need, if anyone's got ordinance books, please bring them, and if you don't have ordinance books, you know, you might not have one. Do you? Okay, turn them in, we've got supplement pages to put in them, and we'll get them up to date then. Okay, we've got the trucks, I don't know if you've seen them out and about, they're pretty. Um, the tap fee research I've compiled and put in your packet for you to look at. Um, second meeting in January, you're going to have a Bangor student report in the report part. Lynn Johnson had wanted to do that, so he said he would get someone ready to do that in January. Um, Mike Gray has closed on his parcels that he wanted, was purchasing in the industrial park, so he is celebrating by working with daycare and Harding's Markets, and a couple other businesses, too, right? That's involved, and they're going to be feeding approximately 50 area families. So, and we, uh, took a buck for luck down to the green door, but today we also did Carnito Meat Hall and...
Arlington Station.
Arlington Station, yes. And we've got our city cam on the, um, flat screen in there in the, as you go in the office, so it's kind of fun to have, too.
See all the business outside.
See what's going on.
All right, any other questions, comments on the city managers' report? Now, keep on going, anything on the DP, who's up new liaison report?
Actually, it's all covered between PSO's, uh, report and, uh, manager's report. The big thing is we got the two new trucks in this week, and there is them. We're going to dispose of two trucks and, uh, take field, but, um, that's it.
So, we're all lined up for ready for snow, right? It's winter time. Okay, no more questions, comments on that, let's keep on moving. Right now, it's up to any public comments. Where you state your name, three minutes?
Uh, news from the county commissioners, Kurt Dorrell. Um, elegant and Van Buren County Commissioners have approved the submission of a collaborative compliance plan that will create a regional public defender's office, uh, which will ensure that we meet the current standards for inpatient defense. Uh, we also approved the recommendation of replacing windows in the Historical Museum in Hartford that cost $29,171. That's something we'll get paid back for. The, um, fairgrounds has a radio tower out there, and half of those funds that come in there go to the, um, museum, we'll be getting those funds back to pay till the windows are paid off. Um, we thought, it was better, they were trying to replace them like a couple at a time, and that just didn't work out, we thought, well, let's just do it and get it done with, so, um, that's, that was the plan. Uh, approval was given by us to a receipt of a grant of $112,425 from the state to fund the Victims Rights Unit and the Prosecutor's Office. And we're having some problems in front of the court in the basement of the administrative building has, uh, some flooding problems. Um, we've contracted air basement systems to try to repair that and, uh, hopefully take care of that problem. Uh, Conexus reported 11 businesses located in Van Buren County will receive funds from the Michigan Skill Trade Training Grant to improve skills of new returning employees. And I also talked to Conexus about, um, some things going on in town here, um, and he said that, uh, he was gonna get, uh, a hold of a couple folks to see what, uh, he could do to help with that. Um, also, in attempt to create a safer work environment in our offices, we have, uh, agreed to purchase and place a little alarm system, which is basically help buttons for a amount not to exceed $59,000. We've approved a contract with Ottawa County to purchase juvenile detention bed space. Um, it's a three-year contract, same type of agreement we have in Allen County. We've, um, given approval to replace four patrol vehicles for the Sheriff's Department for Woodham's Ford for the amount not to exceed $127,132. Calling arbitration hearing, a contractual agreement was reached with the Sheriff's deputies for a new three-year contract. Uh, something that our colony is lacking on is a veterans rep, and, uh, we had a gentleman from Decatur come in two meetings ago and talk to us, and, uh, kind of informed us that, uh, Van Buren is one of only two counties, and we have 83 counties in our state, that does not have a, um, at least a, kind of, play a full, full part-time, if you would, um, uh, veterans rep, so, um, that's something we talked about, that needs to get taken care of. So, they're coming up with, uh, uh, someone for that and a, a job discretion, so we can get that taken care of, because now we only have, uh, someone, I think it's on a Thursday afternoon, and that's just not enough time. Um, on February 13th, uh, Jim McLean is gonna be honored, I ask that we, uh, uh, honor him from the colony as a Bangor boy and, uh, you know, teaching in South Haven, even though he doesn't live in the colony anymore, but, uh, we thought that would be nice to do, and if there's a busy schedule, uh, February 13th is the first that, that he'll show up, can show up for that. We had a, uh, a great thing we did last week, honored a, a lady, her, um, Jean Orosko, I believe is how you say her name. She's been with the colony since September of 1972, 45 years in court, and she retired. That's almost a little bit older than I am. And, uh, Francis Sage, Jeff Ratsky, and Dave Forster were reappointed to the Southwest Michigan Planting Commission. And that's all I have, other than my Christmas.
Awesome.
Thank you. Questions? Thanks.
Any questions, comments? Right, hello?
Uh, not reference to Kurt, but I would like to make a comment. I'm here again to, uh, remind you that I'm really interested, having a, an ordinance in reference to golf carts. Um, I meant to, I wanted to bring you a copy of Hartford's, uh, ordinance, but my printer wouldn't work this afternoon. Anyway, they have one, and it's pretty, really cut and dried, and it just, I, I can't think of anything bad about it. Um, I just want to keep reminding you because I know that once, uh, the bomb starts rolling, it takes a while to get everything done, and it would be nice to have something in place for spring. Thank you.
Thank you. As you know, we are in that process of getting one ready. So, it's in the works already, we, we talked about a couple of months ago, and hopefully by spring we'll have it ready.
I'm getting Hartford's.
And I like Hartford's, it's really, I read it today and I thought, that just sounds like Bangor.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. The others? All right, moving down the list, next one is update fee schedule for tap fees.
Okay, I have put together an amendment application, and then the, the second page you got there, this would actually be on the back, so you'd have everything on one sheet. And I pretty much compiled this from several different communities, and what they do, and then I passed it by Randy to see if everything looked good to him, and he said it looked fine. And I'm thinking the tap charges from most of the communities are really outdated, water bleeds, this is pretty much what they've got, and I'm thinking that it just looks fair. So, just presenting it for you to take a look at and see what you think.
And that would cover all of our costs, if you need?
Um, that, that's just a tap fee, they're gonna have to buy the meter and pay for the time and materials, that's their responsibility. That's just for hooking up to what we've put down there.
Well, can we, uh, consider this a first reading? I'm...
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, we, yeah, because they're not gonna be tapping into anything just yet anyway, so you want to think about it a while, it's something.
So, the, the next step would be to advertise, is this gonna be an ordinance?
No, this, this is not, this is just a, on the fee schedule, which you can do by amendment.
So, at this point, you guys want to act on it? You do, make a motion, if not, we taper it, or somebody, let's take a decision what they'd like to do.
Make a motion.
Hey, I'll make a motion, uh, we accept the new, uh, tap fees according to the material we received here.
Is there a second?
I support.
Any discussion? Basically, just going for new hookups, new penalties, anything else, right? Okay, any other questions, comments?
Should we make it, make it clear that that is plus material, time and cost, kind of material, in addition to, like it says, residential and commercial?
Yeah, the meter, time and material.
Right, maybe we need to add that to make sure it's all read out the same, because it doesn't really say that on here.
Looking to see if I put it on the back, I'll, I'll make the back part with the information on it, I'll make that clear.
Do you want to amend your motion, Harold, as it is, or you're gonna modify it?
Next meeting with the more information, make it, because I've got plenty of room on this page.
All right, let's see what Phil next made.
You want to rescind your motion?
I'll rescind my motion.
Rescind my second.
Okay. All right, so basically, we're gonna table this during next meeting, so we can all clarification for our area for additional, uh, material costs. All right, next one is the first reading, amend ordinance for 284, which should be ordinance 285.
Um, well, this is just your first reading, so you don't have your, you have two readings, so you just have to public key them, don't you? Just the one? Just the one? Okay.
284.
It's been a while. So, no, the, it's, um, actually, you're gonna have to strike at the top, I put ordinance 284. This will be 85 because this is the ordinance to amend to 284. But the changes are on, uh, they're underlined, you've got something under section three.
Under C.
C, and D. And C is designating where the grow, processing, safety compliance facilities and secure transporters go in the industrial park. And then under D, limits the number of provisioning centers to three. And then I like this, too, the city council may review and amend these numbers by resolution, which is a lot easier to do.
That's awesome. Hey, I do have a quick question for you, Sterling. In, uh, section eight, a permit requirement on, uh, number six is, uh, scratched out as far as, uh, compliance with the federal drug preschools on that, like, why did we take that out?
Well, um, it was a bit confusing, so, um, that's one of the reasons, because, you know, when it goes to the state, we'd be, uh, this is one, so maybe it's a thousand dollars.
We're not out of compliance with any?
No, no, not at all.
I was looking at section six, too, number B, and it says that within 30 days after the special use approval, the city shall provide the following to the medical marijuana licensing board. Have we done that?
No. We're working on that.
Okay.
Yeah, because, um, uh, I know Sterling was also working with another attorney to see exactly what kind of paperwork we were expecting to do.
So, we haven't done that yet?
No.
No, no, and just so you know, I think it was, uh, was it Friday, I think, uh, that's when the application, we still didn't send the application.
Also, please note, there is also a modification on section 11, what's it?
I think that's new, isn't it, the additional comments?
Yes, yes, I added that one, yes.
I think that's a good one, too. We have to maintain those, uh, terms and conditions on commercial medical marijuana facilities, special use of may be necessary to protect public safety and welfare and to obtain compliance with the requirements of this ordinance and applicable law.
Okay, remember, too, the ordinance itself would be amended to 285. All right, now, just look for a motion just to accept this, maybe to, we have a next, uh, public hearing?
What we need, then, if we can set a public hearing, the next...
You can set a public hearing, too.
Then that's, I guess that would be the next step.
Maybe you set this first to do public hearing, or just...
No, just to set a public hearing.
Okay, so I guess our next thing will be setting up a public hearing, um...
Maybe it could be then at a regular meeting as well, so...
Why don't we just do that at our next meeting in, in January?
I think we've got, uh, we've got to have a certain amount of days of notification prior. And, uh, and my thoughts...
Look in the corner.
January.
Yeah, we might be better going for the, that second meeting.
Okay, second meeting in January.
That would be the 22nd of January, because there's a 10 or 15 day notice.
So, uh, can, can someone make a, a motion to, uh, accept having a public hearing for the ordinance amended 284, which will become 285 for, um, the second meeting in, uh, January 2018?
I'll make a motion to, uh, set a public hearing meeting to amend, uh, medical marijuana ordinance, uh, number 284 to ordinance number 285 at the, um, regular city council meeting on January 22nd, 2018.
A second. Any more?
No, we kind of shifted the, the meetings for that month, there were some holidays and different things, so we moved, we moved everything down.
Yeah, we'll set that calendar up.
We'll hold on that.
On the 22nd. So, there's been a motion, been seconded.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. The next one is, uh, 135 West Monroe, negotiations with the purchaser in progress. So, we look for a motion to approve a term to do that, or just a statement?
No, it's gonna be a... This we've already kind of discussed.
So, hopefully we'll get some feedback by our, hopefully, maybe by our next meeting coming in January about this. Excellent.
The right terms, too.
All right, any more questions, comments on that? Uh, the next one is new business, the LEAP protection coverage in rental homes.
That was kind of brought to my attention. That was kinda brought to my attention, rental properties in the city with our new LEAP protection plan. Owners are not being notified, but the renters are calling up or have the capability of calling up as opting out of the plan without the owners of the property being known. So I think we, as a city, need to set up something as a letter to the owners of these properties. I'm sure Laura and Regina have something in place now, but it was just brought up.
Yeah, that already crossed my mind, so I'm glad you're bringing that up. I haven't had anybody opt out, that's a renter, yet, but I had kinda thought about that, too, you know, an owner needs.
Because it leaves the owner stuck, stranded, just because the renter, you know, could move next week, and you got a flood, because we just had it happen across the street, there's a rental house from us, and they were out there, Charlie Dodson owns the house, and they were out there with an excavator fixing the water leak. And I kind of thought, you know, that could really pin an owner of these properties to a big tune of money when they're not protected when they should be.
Absolutely.
So.
Would you like us to compose a letter and then have it in the next packet?
That'd be really cool.
That would be great.
But would that necessarily reach the owners of the property, it's just gonna reach renters?
Well, we usually have addresses of where the owners live.
I'd try it, at least the ones that I know of, I'll at least try to send to the owners so that they know.
Yeah. Well, I guess part of that, who's gonna have the authority to be able to opt out?
Right.
Is that part of the rental agreement with the owner and the property renter? Or is it gonna hold back on the owner? The person's probably gonna pay the water bill, but probably the renter. But then they opt out, I'm playing this, the owner's gonna be held.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wouldn't think that if I was the owner.
Yeah. I think we oughta at least contact the renter, don't make that decision.
And they can discuss it with the renters.
At least get them the option, rather than the renter just scooting down and making a big flood in the basement.
Yeah. So if we can draft something up for our next meeting, hopefully can address that issue. Thank you, Danny. The next thing is approval of twenty-eighteen city council meeting schedule?
I'll make a motion to accept the two thousand and eighteen city, city council meeting schedule.
Support.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. There's your new council, or for your new meeting schedule for the city council of two thousand and eighteen. Going down the list, next one is the name change of Sturgis debit card, remove acquired treasurer and add new treasurer.
The debit card actually has a name on it, and Sturgis wants the minutes, the meeting minutes, to reflect that he agreed to take the name off of that. I know you voted to take the names off the accounts, but they're not considering that the same thing as the name on the debit card.
So do we need two separate motions?
Yes.
We already did the ones for the accounts.
But what I'm saying for the debit card, do we need two separate motions?
Remove one and add one.
You wanna go ahead and make a motion to remove?
I will, I will make a motion that we remove Cam Schultz's name from the debit card from Sturgis Bank.
I'll support.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Give me a roll call on that, or give me a count. Motion carried. Now, the second motion, I'm gonna make another motion to, to add Stephanie Kable, right?
Okay, I'll make the motion that we add Stephanie Kable's name onto the Sturgis debit card.
I'll support.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. The next one that we have here is body cam policy information and samples state required.
Yeah, in your packet, you have information regarding Public Act eighty-five, regarding law enforcement body, more camera, Privacy Act, and it takes effect, effect January eighth, two thousand and eighteen, and Danny said this information was very stimulating.
Exactly.
Anyway, it kinda goes over the edge, but also what it does is it does require any municipality whose police officers use body cameras to develop a policy. So there's a couple samples in here of what the policy would look like, the.
I have, actually, I'm working on a policy.
So are you working on one?
Yeah, I don't, I don't like the ICP, a lot of their opinions have been off recently, like they want warning shots fired on gun situations, and it's just no good. I've been in talks with some of the other chiefs last year of policy, I will have a policy in place before the deadline.
Okay. And bring it to the council.
Do they have to approve it?
Yes.
Well, I didn't know, because all policy procedures we know, this has to be approved by a council.
I would think it wouldn't be a bad idea.
We still shoot first?
All right, so, so we'll come back, our police chief proposed a new policy, next meeting in January. At this point, we have another opportunity to call up the comments, we'll take time for a minute. Anything, all right. Then, looking down the list, if there's no comments, will be a board finish appointments correspondence. There's a SSBBC millage renewal slash new millage request wording.
Senior Services of Van Gogh County is going to have on the August ballot a request to renew the quarter mill, and they are also going to have a request on there for a new quarter mill, so they're, they're going for a half mill total, but they did not wanna combine it in one, they wanted to at least get their renewal if they don't get the increase of the other. But I just wanted you to see what the wording was going to look like. I didn't get the one for the city, so I had to cross out township, and then our, our revenue, I didn't do the numbers, but will be different from what the townships is gonna be. There will be resolutions that the council will have to pass in order to have these put on their ballot. So this is just to let you know, this is coming. And also, I did put the budget for the senior services on the, in your, in your spots before the meeting, because I know Freddie asked before about budget, and they're at a little over sixty-two percent, and they're not halfway through the year yet. So they, there is a need for a little bit of additional millage, they're having to increase costs in their mills, particularly, and that is throwing off a lot of things, too. And then they did lose Antwerp Township, which took their ninety grand, and doing their own, they've been doing that for a few years, but that kinda put a pretty big pinch on their budget, too, so, anyway, that's just kind of an FYI for you to look at, for now.
Okay, and as we bring into that, can you also tell us how much money that's gonna take?
Yeah.
A thousand dollars of your freezing, stuff like that, would you put in?
Yeah, definitely.
Any other questions, comments on that?
Mr. Mayor. Yes. Regina, if you could, sometime maybe you and I need to sit down and talk, because this is a really hot topic, and I need to know some direction from, not that all of my ministers always ever since before will look at it the same way, but I need to know what your guys' thoughts are, and so, when things come up at the county level, I can speak for what you guys.
Yeah, I don't know what the council's thoughts are on it being county-wide, and I think that's probably the issue, but public transit and the ambulance, and, you know, a lot of them are, and they have to go township to township to renew it. The stability is really hampered with that, so.
Going down the list, next one's a DDA recommendation. At this point, I'd like to appoint William Bill Stanislavski to at one of the large seats.
Uncle Billy.
Billy, William.
Uncle Billy.
Yeah, Uncle Billy, to one of the open seats on the DDA board. I'm gonna get the approval from the city council.
I'll make. Make a motion to approve William Bill Stanislavski to the at-large seat for the DDA through the mayor's recommendation.
I'll support.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Then also, as we amended our agenda, also, we also have another person, I'd like to appoint one of our new business owners in town, David J., why'd he say his name, Cardy?
Cardy.
McCarty, as part of the Cognito, new business owner, also, or, he's, actually, it's my fault, Great Meat Hall Brewing Company. My fault, I'm sorry about that, as a Great Meat Hall Brewing Company. So, nice to have another owner involved, I'd like to recommend appointing him.
I recommend that we elect through the mayor's movement to put David J. McCarty, who is of the Meat Hall, on the DDA for a term. I assume it's gonna be the same as Young Williams for twelve thirty-one or ninety.
No, it won't, they're all different, and I don't know, we've got one, Bob Emirates goes to twelve thirty-one of two thousand and twenty, and then Rich Greens would start over in January and go to two thousand and twenty-one, so I wonder if we should.
I'd like to put Billy as the at-large member, that would be one.
He could be taking Mitch's.
Yeah.
Richie, or, he'd be there till twelve thirty-one.
Well, see, Pat was, too, and I put him.
Pat was in the at-large.
Huh?
Pat was at-large.
So, so was Rich Green, also.
So Billy would be the at-large till two thousand and twenty-one.
Yeah, I guess it really isn't that.
So, so the both at-large till two thousand and twenty-one?
Well, there's two at-larges, and then there's one where a business owner would have to fill this.
Right.
So our two at-larges are from one, one eighteen, to twelve, thirty-one, twenty-one. So that makes it easy. They're both same term, and I guess the other one we can kinda put at would be to fill in for Bob Emirates' whole position from one one, two thousand and seventeen, to twelve thirty-one, two thousand and twenty. So I'm hoping you amend that, or what are we gonna do to specify that date?
So you wanna put Dave here, or you wanna put Bill here?
I'd put Bill here, since that's, that's in the at-large position, and this one.
Put Dave here.
Dave's taking over the box.
Yeah, Dave's taking over the box.
He's doing one, one one seventeen, or one one eighteen.
His, his, Dave then would be one one seventeen, well, one one eighteen, but that seat ends twelve thirty-one, twenty-one.
Okay, and then Bill's gonna be, he's not gonna be twelve thirty-one to twelve thirty-one nineteen.
He'll be one one eighteen to twelve thirty-one, twenty-one.
The thing is trying to stagger the dates for different people, so all of a sudden, we don't have to, you know, potentially replace different people at different, you know, it's.
What was mine, mine was still twenty?
And? Yeah, you're, you're, you're twelve thirty-one to twenty-one.
Okay, I'll make a second for McCarty, because we don't have a second on the floor yet.
Oh, okay.
So I'll, I'll make a second so we can keep discussing this.
Well, if I may, Arrow, briefly, I think it would be best if, whoever, whatever vacant is, you've supported the point based on specific, that's what's due, so which is at-large, you know, the question about Emmerich, so which is gonna replace Bob Emmerich for a return, and so on and so forth.
So, so.
Okay, so you want us to amend our motions to make it specific as to who they're replacing?
Correct, correct, I don't like that when the terms obviously like, this term, so and so.
Yeah, I'd like to appoint David J. McCarty into Bob Emirates' previous position from one one, two thousand and seventeen, to twelve thirty-one, two thousand and twenty. Can I request that be amended to meet that motion?
Yes, I'll amend that to meet that specification.
And you second it to that one?
Yes.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved, welcome two new members to the DDA, starting out next year.
So do we have to amend ours?
Okay, we have, we have to amend theirs, because you have to say who's replacing, is Bill replacing?
Same thing, I'd like to reappoint William Bill Stanislavski for the at-large position to replace Rich Green with a date of one one eighteen to twelve thirty-one, twenty-one. Steve, can I get you amend your motion to that?
I amend my motion.
I amend my support.
I'll amend my motion, remove, remove McCarty also.
You already did that one, you just didn't. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, now we got this situated.
Okay.
Motion approved. Thank you, guys, for that. Thanks a lot for the error, for the correction, make it easier, thanks a lot. Also, going down the list, I'd like to motion to accept the resignation for Leon Christian resignation from the.
Did you need to do Cs for Pat and Rich and Bob?
Cs, I'll just.
Okay, DDA recommendation acceptance, resignation by Pat Bader, Rich Green, Bob Emmerich. So we need to do them all separately, or not?
No, I think so.
Okay, who made the motion? Who seconded?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Now, Dee, you probably should have did that first, then appointed people. All right, looking down the list, is acceptance of Leon's Christians' resignation from the Board of Review.
Make a motion to accept Leon's resignation from the Board of Review.
Is there a second?
Second. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. And there was also a request to move alternate Renee Durrell to full-time BOR D seat, Board of Review. Going back, I guess that's basically going back to Leon Christians' resignation.
I'll make a motion to follow mayor's recommendation to move Renee Durrell to a full member on the Board of Review, empty seat term from one one eighteen to twelve thirty-one, twenty, replacing Leon Kristen.
Support.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. And also, down your list, as F, is the election jeopardy, election calendar. Election calendar, calendar year. We don't make such efforts, do we?
Well, there's nothing we have to do on that.
Nope, nothing to do, just let you guys know.
They're throwing out.
So you guys know, so that's in your, your package? Same thing, you guys have the Pride Care November report, any questions, comments on that? No questions, comments? Now, let's go ahead and start with city council members' comments. Danny?
First of all, I'd like to wish everybody a very happy and safe holiday season, and a Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year. It's been a pleasure serving on the Board this entire year with everybody, we've made some really leaps and bounds on a lot of different things. We've got a great staff at City Hall, we've got things moving on the DDA moving forward because of the people stepping down, people being replaced. The EDC seems to be moving around and doing some great things for the city, it's kinda like a gold rush right now, but that's okay. There's, you know, in, in being in the barber business, you hear pros and cons, of yes, I like it, no, I don't like it, you know, when are you gonna fix that road?
We're still working on that.
So, yeah, I mean, it's been a pretty eventful year for two thousand and seventeen, we had a great Christmas parade, we had a great Fourth of July parade, we had a great Fourth of July fireworks, we got a great police department going on, so let's just keep moving forward, and I think it's been a hell of a year, so. Happy New Year to everybody, and a very Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Danny. Merry Christmas to you, too. All right.
Well, I just wanna say, I know it's a, it's a difficult time, it's time of season when people lose loved ones, and it's never easy, but I just wanna send out a personal condolences for those who have lost and to Lou and Floyd Nelson's family, I didn't believe, when I see fans also, but just send out personal condolences to them, and wish them well in this holiday season. Also, just wanna wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, also, hopefully it's a good season for everyone, we'll eat and be merry and jolly, and have a good time, so, that's all I have.
Thanks for that, look.
Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I think we also have a really good year, and we need to keep this momentum going and, and keep the town moving forward as we did this year. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Harold. Steve?
I feel bad, but I didn't say Merry Christmas to everybody, so Merry Christmas. And also, did we ever get anywhere, did we make any phone calls to the railroad company or MDOT about the railroad track downtown? Did we get anywhere on that?
Well, I emailed our contact, and our contact emailed another person that's closer into the area, and that's supposed to check on it.
Because that's gonna be quite a bump, and I know a lot of people driving around and going through the center.
Yeah.
I sent really good, a really good picture, so.
Okay, that's all I got.
Want everybody to know that's something the city of Bangor cannot fix, it has to be done by the railroad company.
They make no bones telling us what to do.
Yeah.
You know, if it rolls out, it oughta roll back up.
You got it. Anything else, Steve?
Yep.
Lynn?
Well, I guess I'm gonna say Merry Christmas, too, I don't wanna be the Bahambo person here. So, I do have a few things, the green door, I went in the other day, it's looking really, really nice in there. And like Regina said, it was really fun, we took four Buck for Lux around the city, and nice, warm thank yous and everything, that's nice, other than to have somebody yelling at you about the road and railroad track or something, so that was very lovely.
something, so that was very lovely. Um, I'm going to ask us all to pray for Dwayne Goss, because he is not doing really well, and that will be a sad day for our city. Um, people are starting to notice how nice our town looks, and it's really nice, we're getting comments back about, you know, how, what they like about what's going on, so I think that's really wonderful. And then also, thank you to Jamie Little, um, who power washed the front of City Hall today. It looks really nice, a lot of the stains went away, it's, it's very lovely. And then, um, I love the rock at the fire station, I think it's so neat, when I drove by there, it was like with the symbol on and everything, so those are my comments.